Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city recorder please call roll?
Mayor Jakola.
Present.
Counselor Dykstra.
Here.
Counselor Mann.
Here.
Counselor Oofers.
Here.
Counselor Workman.
Here.
Counselor Savage.
Here.
Council President Steinhebel.
Here.
All righty, thank you. The following items are considered routine and will be acted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of the items unless councilor's sole request. In this case, the item will be removed from the consult calendar and considered separately. Agenda Lebanon City's Council Agenda, January 10th, 2024. Council Meetings, December 13th, 2023. Regular and executive session. Easements, South Ninth Street, River Center Plaza. And here's the one that I always have trouble with. KG, you want to help me on this one? Thank you. Petition, South Ninth Street. So is there a motion?
Can I ask a question of order on this real quick? I don't have a question about one of these, but on one of the documents in the easements, I noticed a date that was wrong. It said that we entered the agreement in 2033 instead of 2023. All the rest of the dates are right, and I doubt that'll affect anything, but I thought I'd at least point it out.
If I may, we caught that, and it was changed, and it's in the new.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is there a motion? Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve. It's been second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Public comments. Citizens may address the council by filling out a testimony comment card prior to speaking and hand it to the city recorder. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comment to council. The council may take an additional two minutes to ask clarifying questions. City recorder will accept and distribute written comments at speaker's request. So we'll get right into this. Remember, five minutes. We do want to hear what you have to say, but keep it concise and to the point. So first up, Michael Couch. Crossroads Communities is going to be speaking about.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Michael Couch. I'm the Executive Director of Crossroads Communities. For those of you who aren't familiar with us, we are a Lebanon-based nonprofit. Our focus is providing assistance to individuals and households in crisis or who need a little extra assistance in progressing through life. Our focus for meeting today is to address an Oregon statute which Lynn County has adopted, but Lebanon has not. It is OR 307.541, which exempts nonprofits from property taxes through local governing bodies, specifically as it relates to operating affordable housing. So if you're not familiar, Crossroads Communities obtained an apartment complex in May of last year, and we are in the process of modifying that to affordable housing. Many of the households who are living there will see their rent decrease, and as residents move out, we are replacing those with individuals who need a little extra help with lower rents. As part of our commitment to the community, we're looking to be able to address this on a larger scale, and as we continue hopefully obtaining more property that we can then either build or convert to affordable housing. The property in question, property taxes last year were a little over $15,000, and we would like to petition the city to consider adopting this so that way we can go to the county and seek an exemption. $15,000 would cover almost half of an employee for me, which would be significant in us being able to assist the needs of low-income and hard-working, working-class folks within Lebanon. Whenever we have a request that could adversely affect finances from one of our program partners, and the city's been a fantastic partner of Crossroads, thank you, we always like to be able to say what we can return for it. And in the social service industry, financially, we look at something called a social impact calculator. It was generated and has been in the process of being fine-tuned since 96 through a group called Life Fund. And these folks identify the financial results of social impact done by social service organizations. When we put our services to the calculator, we saw a return of almost 300% at the county level for the benefit to the city. So we're taking a look at about $45,000 yearly we're saving the city or helping the city earn in business revenue or reducing the cost of medical needs or criminal convictions. As we all know, people who are housed need to use social services a little less. They significantly reduce the need to be able to use emergency and urgent care clinics, and they're much less likely to be involved with law enforcement. So I don't want to take up a whole lot of time today. I just wanted to make you aware that this statute is in place. I hope to be able to speak with you at a longer period of time once we, on the calendar, as we start exploring these options, to be able to encourage you to adopt this particular statute, which will be able to assist us in assisting all of your constituents.
All righty, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. Next up is Julie Anan. Ward one. The next few speakers, one, two. I think they're all, the next seven speakers are all Ward one. Well, eight speakers, so.
I appreciate that you're giving us this time this evening. I am Judy Anan, and I live at Twin Cedars Manufactured Home Park, and I've been there about eight years. And we are, as most of you probably know, an over-55 community. I've dedicated over 20 years of my life to the care and the service of seniors. I'm a retired long-term care manager and director. I continue to be a senior advocate. I'm asking for your support in assuring seniors remain in their homes on property that they are now located in, because mobile homes are not mobile. Let me be very clear, I'm a firm believer that business owners should make a profit from their investments. That's what sets us aside from other countries around the world. But I also believe that we have an obligation to protect our seniors and the vulnerable. Oregon allowed a 14.6 increase this year and going forward, up to 10% in rent. Our landlord has demonstrated he'll continue to raise the rent on our lots at the highest rate the law will allow, right to the penny, believe me, to the penny. We're looking for a balance between their right to make a good profit on their investments and our right to reasonable treatment and remain in our homes. But we can't afford these increases on fixed incomes. We need to be honoring our seniors and our veterans and those who have worked hard in productive lives and have contributed to society. We've reached a very vulnerable time in our lives, and we need a little protection. Manufactured homes have been an affordable way for retired seniors to own a home. There's a huge difference between a landlord owning a single-family home or an apartment building and the cost to maintain, and the cost to maintain it versus a landlord owning the lot a homeowner already lives on. Rent control for manufactured home parks won't contribute to housing shortage spiral. We'll buy it. If they want to not have part of it, we'll buy it. Throughout the country, seniors are dealing with unreasonable rent increases by predatory landlords. That's not my statement, that's the U.S. Senator's statement, and I agree. Landlords using government-backed loans to purchase manufactured home parks. Even though we own our homes, the real power lies in the land of our landowner. We're dealing with unreasonable rent increases with little benefit, poor communication regarding safety issues, unreasonable restrictions of the use of our common areas, and fear of retaliation if we speak up. Did you know that there's even a mobile home park, a mobile home park university bootcamp? And this is what they teach. And I quote, "The fact tenants can't afford the $5,000 it costs to move a mobile home keeps revenue stable and makes it easy to raise rent without losing occupancy." The Senate Banking, Housing, and Urban Affairs Committee introduced the bill Stop Predatory Investment Act, but that doesn't address manufactured homeowners, park owners. Senator Ron Wyden stated in Oregon and all across the country, "Typical Americans who just want affordable housing are getting outmuscled by Wall Street investors as they are buying up homes and hiking up rents." We're asking for the council to help in preserving our community by considering a rent control proposal, rent control committee. Include us on your agenda in the future. Join us in communicating with our governor, state's attorney general, state and U.S. legislators, and maybe, and support us in sponsoring a bill, prefer rent caps for manufactured home committees. Oh, I'm in the yellow. Senate Bill 611 didn't do it for us. It did it for, it did it for others, but it did not, it didn't help us. And so that's what we're asking for, is your help in any way possible. And I really appreciate your time today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions from council?
I'm not making this comment as the council, but if you want to use mine in any way I can help, I support you.
Thank you very much.
I'd be glad to. You can put my name on anything. If you need me to write a letter to somebody, if you need me to push something for you, I'm here.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, really appreciate that. Again, I believe that the people who own our park have a right to make a profit. I just think it needs to be reasonable.
Dave Workman.
Dave Workman, thank you, Dave Workman.
I also have a quick question for you.
Yes.
So you said that the rent control law that Oregon has does not apply to manufactured homes? Is that, is that what you're saying?
It doesn't help us, because we, we live on a small lot. The owners of our property are maintaining the roads, few other things. They're not maintaining what an apartment building owner is maintaining, or we put our roofs on, and more people will talk about this. We are responsible for our homes. We rent the lot.
So I just wanted to clarify, because I don't know. They're renting the lot, and they're limited by the rent control to 10% next year, is that correct?
True.
Okay.
If I might share, this year, when our governor signed Senate Bill 611 in June, and she said any notices that went out in, there was a date in July, I don't remember exactly what it was. My rent was due to go up this year in December. I got my 90-day notice right after she signed that bill to assure that they got their 14.6%. Now, it's not against the law. It's absolutely not against the law. They were within their rights to do that. But it speaks to who, how they run their business, and we're at their mercy.
How'd they get to the 14.6%?
Cost of livi, 7% plus the cost of living.
Okay. My understanding of that was that, and maybe they've changed this, was that it's, that it's 7% plus CPI or 10% with the 10% cap?
Going forward.
Okay.
Going forward. But because they got our notices in before that went into effect in July, we're paying 14.6. I believe it was 9% last year, 14.6 this year. And believe me, if it's 10% next year, it will be 10%. I have no doubt in my mind. And we get 3% increases in our income, or thereabouts. Any other questions? Again, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is Nancy McMacan. Nancy?
Hi, folks. I might be able to shed some light on some of it. Each of us took a piece of this SB 611. My name is Nancy McMac, and I own a manufactured home in Twin Cedars here in Lebanon, where I have lived for five years. Tonight, I wish to bring up the points on SB 611 to your attention and asks, ask for your active support to separate manufactured homes from apartment buildings and home rentals. So we're all lumped in in that SB 611, and we already own our homes. So these folks are renting a dwelling with their dollar, and we are paying property tax like homeowners do. And we're renting a patch of dirt, literally, not even a pad of concrete for a manufactured home to remain on permanently. But the way this started was, we're coming up, and we were all told this when this happened, management companies argue with lot renters that rent increases are necessary to keep up with market rates. So while I was, got the hang of paying, we'll just say 550, but the two-bedroom, one-bath place, which is more common than the manufactured homes here in town, they're paying 750. We now have to shine like their market rates do. And the reason for the increase is allegedly for improvements. There are no improvements. There are no improvements in Twin Cedars. This is basically where the first, where this all began, the gross rate of increase and renting a patch of dirt. If we could understand and get your folks' help to separate out from the other renters, we actually, we would, it would make all the sense in the world, because we are not, we are talking apples and oranges. These are not apples and apples, not by a long shot. We pay property taxes, we own our own homes, are responsible for our own rents, excuse me, repairs, improvements, roofs, but who can afford them once these guys get a hold of us? It's now $1,167 for someone to come in, brand-new, if they can afford to buy one of the houses. Now, nobody can afford to sell, because, because they're being turned away, they can't afford the, the rent, the basic space rent. If we separate both, we have to understand that a dwelling is not being offered for that rent money, just the dirt. Of course, there's water. I'm not saying that they don't provide us water. The water is questionable, but the point still is, water's there, electric's there, cable's there, sewer, garbage, you get it. It's kind of like a campground. So to grow on a point that Judy was making, for me, from December of 2022 to December of '23 this year, my space rent had increased 24.5% lawfully. They did the 9.9, and then as soon as that bill was hit, they served me with my 90 days saying that in December, you're going to be paying 14.5 more. So within that time period, put the two together, and they've increased something fierce. But it has to change. It's predatory. They don't, how do you need that money if you're not doing anything with that money? You know, we have dark streets, we have potholes in the streets, et cetera. It's, it's, we expect the landlords, and I appreciate that everybody's got to make money, I totally do, I totally get it. For me, the understandable part for us to break away here, or for us to actively fix ourselves, which would be to break away from the standard, quote, rental properties. Worthy of note, this is important, you guys, one-third of our income is supposed to be paid to housing. We're way past this, like, so far past this. I have statements from folks that could not be here, statements from, oh, shoots, sorry. I'm going to hand these out to you. I didn't even pay attention to the lights. Sorry. Thank you, you guys.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. There's one for the whole.
Was there any questions from council? Comments? Okay. I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call two up so we can speed along, but Day Thomas? And Kathy Kinkler? I believe that's how you say it? You'll both get your own five minutes, but then we don't have to have people walking up.
Yes, I understand. I appreciate your time. My name is Danae Thomas. I'm a resident of Twin Cedars in space number six. I've been there since 2018. My husband and I purchased our home.
Yeah. As close to that mic as you can.
Thank you. Okay. And so I could make a good record? I have found the inquiries penned by Senator Brown of Ohio to both Freddie Mac and to Legacy Communities LLC regarding purchases of senior manufactured housing communities as directly relevant concerning the actions of foreign investors on 55-plus communities. Legacy Communities purchased Twin Cedars in late 2021 and sought to raise the rent immediately. That attempt was interrupted due to the actions of one resident seeking legal counsel, as the state of Oregon does not permit such an increase. It should be noted that the original owners, the inheritors, did not provide the residents an opportunity to purchase the property at the time of sale, and were ultimately advised that the property had not sold to Legacy Communities. However, Legacy did indeed purchase. Therefore, the communications penned to Mr. Patrick O'Malley, the CEO of Legacy, and to Freddie Mac are worthy of attention. Among the questions to Freddie Mac, quote, number six, "Does Freddie Mac believe that a community or building can be considered affordable housing if rents are increased to a level that makes housing unaffordable or that displaces existing residents?" Senator Brown prefaces questions to Legacy with clarifying statements referenced herein, quote, "These sudden and drastic rent increases have left residents on fixed incomes scared and without options. Residents report that they will not be able to afford rent increases, nor can they sell their homes, because prospective buyers are unable or unwilling to pay the high and increasing lot rents that Legacy Communities charges. Seniors who have worked hard their whole lives, brought and bought a home believing that they had found a safe, stable place to live, now face the prospect of losing that home and having nowhere to go. And news reports indicate that Ohio is not alone. Residents are reporting exorbitant rent increases in Legacy Communities' properties across the country," end quote. Highlighting a few of the questions posed by Senator Brown, who has deadlined acceptable response for the 9th of January, that is yesterday. One of them, "Please explain how Legacy Communities establishes rents or fees and rent or fee increases for existing and new tenants. Legacy Communities specializes in senior manufactured housing communities. Does Legacy Communities consider what rents are affordable, defined as housing costs taking no more than 30% of a household's income to existing residents, including those on a fixed income, when setting rents and fees? If yes, please explain how those data points are considered, and if not, why not?" The next question, "Please describe in detail what engagement Legacy Communities has with residents to discuss rent increases and other changes. Sub-question, if Legacy Communities residents are unable to afford lot rent increases, does Legacy Communities have a policy or a program to help tenants remain in their home? If so, please describe these policies or programs in detail. If not, why not?" Sub-question, "If a resident is unable to afford their lot rent and cannot remain in their home, please describe what happens to ownership of a resident's home. My notice of increase for December of 2023 came in late June, immediately prior to that rent cap, which passed in July. This means I, and many others, must pay the rent increase, which is the very basis of the maximum allowable increase yearly. Seniors in our golden years have an average social security benefit of $1,837 per month." That's taken from the web. "I am not yet 60, and therefore I am outside of support or assistance. I work full-time, and I am widowed. I must pay my mortgage, and I must bear the cost of upkeep and equipment failures, such as plumbing and heating, which I've experienced. I must pay, as stated, with existing residents. We are without options. Our equity has been stolen. My monthly rent is now over $700 a month. We are good for nothing but eviction. After lifetimes of supporting our community and our nation, this is financial rape. Exposed, is repeated, ongoing, and ugly, and there is no relief in sight. I am asking for your help. Thank you."
Thank you.
Quick question, just to clarify, they, there's utilities at, at, but do they pay for them, or do you still have to pay utilities as well?
In our particular park, we actually have a well, and they have to maintain the well.
Electrical, cable, those kind of things, you pay that?
Exist, yeah, we pay, we pay, we pay electric. Now, I'm told that it used to be included in the rent. New residents now have to pay additional water fees, and for that, is what I'm told.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. My name is Kathy Kinkler. I no longer live at Twin Cedars. I lived there for a number of years. I have been an advocate and, and to social services throughout Lynn County, and I'm very much an advocate for long-term care and senior rights. With so many of my friends still live in the park, and I see them struggling, and some of them don't make nowhere near $1,700 a month. So as their social security goes up 3.2%, and the rent for the property goes up 10%, at some point, they're going to be out of a home, and they can't move their home, and they can't pay for that. So unless other family members or such pitch in and help them out, they are going to be out of where they can live. And I guess that's really all I had to say. I just want to clarify that I no longer live there, but I'm very much an advocate of so many of my friends that still live there, and I see them struggling to make ends meet and buy food and car insurance and all of that kind of stuff, and they don't make enough money at some point to be able to afford to live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lynn Cole and Misty McCormick.
Hello. My name is Lynn Cole, and I'm just going to read my statement here. First of all, I've been an advocate for seniors as well. I'm retired nurse of 51 years, and I retired a year and a half ago. My goal was to move down here to be close to a friend, and I sold my house in Portland and moved here less than a year ago. So I thought this would be a great place for me to live. I purchased a home at Twin Cedars, and I thought it was a great opportunity. It was affordable on my income, and I am enjoying the things that I'm doing right now with my friends, and, and I support the community. Unfortunately, my rent will increase by 10% this year, and my social security benefit only increased by 3.2%. My community is facing the same challenges as I am, and I want to say I support everyone else that came before me. The cost of groceries, gas, utilities, and home repairs adds on to the financial stress also. The value depreciation of my home and increased lot fee does not make it attractive to a potential buyer, and I'm feeling trapped in my situation and wonder what will happen if I cannot keep up with the lot fee increase. I will take a quote from an article written by Sheila Calcolar on 3821. It was featured in the New Yorker magazine. The article is entitled, "What Happens When Investment Firms Acquire Trailer Parks?" And this is a quote from the article expressed by Mobile And this is a quote from the article expressed by Mobile Home University website. "Mobile home parks are the only segment of real estate that grows stronger as the economy weakens. It feels like the investment firms are taking advantage of low-income fixed-income populations." So I just wanted to speak on a personal note of how I feel and wanted to support people that were here, and I appreciate the time that you gave me to speak about it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Thank you so much. Misty?
Hi, I'm Misty McCormick. I live in Twin Cedars with my mom. I will just say, on a personal note, I'm really glad that it's the two of us because I don't know how we could afford to have just one person in the household. I'm not sure how other people are doing it. And I work full-time. My mom's got social security, but it's... It's a stretch. Tonight... Oh, one other personal note. Does anyone realize that you can't get a home equity loan? We're paying for all of our repairs, but we don't own our land, so there's no funding that we can access, other than to get a personal loan for a really high interest rate. And even if you can afford to get that, boy, you're paying a high, high interest rate, and you'll never get it paid off. It'll never pay itself off by the time you try to go sell that home, especially with the rents right now. I do have a letter. It is from our prior managers. Their names are Betty and Steve Goldie. They couldn't be here tonight, but wanted me to read this. Says this letter is for my community regarding high rents at Twin Cedars Mobile Home Community, 55-and-over community. "My husband and I purchased our home November 2011. We became managers at our community in February of 2012. We held that position for eight years until the director of Mr. Jerry Dirksen..." Oh, under the direction, sorry, of Mr. Jerry Dirksen. "During that time, rents were raised appropriately for every year or two. The raises were around $25 to $35 per month. Mr. Dirksen raised the rents to what his residents could bear, yet he still made a profit, not just what the market says. Our residents always told us this was their forever home. Since the rents have gone up, our residents here do not feel that way anymore. Instead, they are worried and stressed out. How much longer can they financially afford to live in their homes? They're unable to sell their homes due to the rent spaces being raised to $1,100 per month and more. This affects our ability to go into assisted living due to lack of assets. Basically, they have no place to go. How can our city help them? Thank you, Betty Goldie." Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Deborah Coaster and Sadie Law?
Excuse me, I'm really nervous.
Don't be.
I am too. Don't worry about it.
I have a statement from Mariel McRae that lives in a trailer park in number... Space number 75. She's been there five years, and she just lost her husband just a few months ago. But she has had her home up for herself since May, and she's had a lot of people come look at it, but once they find out how much it costs for the rent, the lot, they don't, you know, they back out. They don't want it. And she needs to sell because she needs to... She's 94 years old, and she needs to go into assisted living. So she's kind of worried about that. And on a personal note, myself, my mom and I, and my father, he passed away a while back. We've been there almost 20 years now. It used to be a nice place to live, but it seems really stressful now. But I worry about... My mom's 88, so I'm really stressed and worried about what happens when she goes because I can't afford to stay there. And, you know, my trailer needs a roof and car... You know, it needs all kinds of work done on it. And am I going to have a hard time selling it when my mom passes away? Because like I said, I won't be able to stay there at all. And raising the rent at like $89 in one lump, that's a lot to me, you know? People that don't have money. $89 is a lot of money. So that's all I wanted to say.
Well, you did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments from council? Thank you. Next up, Sadie?
Hi. I also live in Twin Cedars Mobile Home Park, and I really appreciate everything that was shared here, and I agree. And this is getting really difficult financially. But I just wanted to mention something about the mobile homes in Twin Cedars Park. I like my mobile, and I feel at home. I used to feel, a couple of years ago, that I had an asset, a valuable asset, that should I need to move... Well, as a single aging woman, it gave me a sense of security, and I really appreciated that. But... And I believe that Jerry Dirksen, he... You know, he made... He really helped the park be what it is. And I know he cared about the park. He cared about the residents. And he left behind a wonderful legacy. And now, the legacy that we are dealing with is, of course, quite different. Legacy LLC, which are the current owners. And Legacy actually, they own multiple properties across the U.S. And I see that on their website, they listed that they have 70-plus manufactured housing communities throughout the United States, and also multiple RV resorts throughout the United States. And like everybody... They will, from what I see at least, at our park, they will try to get to the penny, everything that they can. And they are out of state. And... I just have noted here that Twin Cedars used to be a highly esteemed and sought-after park to live in, and outsiders desired to establish residency there. My daughter is a real estate agent, and she's quite aware of the change in perception of prospective buyers. When they... When prospective buyers realize the rent for newcomers, they're not interested, or as my daughter put it, they just say, "Forget it." And as it was brought out, I have written here that space rent alone for someone coming in... Well, I put around $1,200, but I'm hearing it's slightly less than that. But on top of that, of course, there's the required mobile insurance and property tax on the mobile. And all that, in addition to all that, is the cost of the mobile home that somebody would be purchasing. And anyway, it just makes it that Twin Cedar residents don't have that asset that they once had. And as well as being... Well, I could relate to what was mentioned about feeling trapped, you know? I'm just hoping that there is a solution to alleviate the rising rent pressure and also the devaluation of our homes. It would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to say, that's the last speaker on this subject, if there's stuff that the council wants to say.
I just have a question about it. I just want to make sure I understand. Who... Is it Legacy that owns this now?
Yes.
Okay.
And you pay property tax on dirt?
I'm sorry?
Y'all are paying property tax on...
Property tax.
For not actually owning the land, though.
But the Legacy isn't paying any tax, I would assume. Okay, I just want...
Did you want to speak on this subject? Please come forward so we can at least hear you, and it's recorded. But make it quick because you didn't fill out a card. I'll give you less than a minute.
Okay. In talking to the people over at Sandy Am Park, I understand that Legacy just bought them out too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So the group understands the process. I just want to make sure that we're not going to take this up for discussion, I don't believe, right now, but it will most likely, it will come up in councilor comments at the end of the session. So I just want to make that clear. It's not that we're not discussing it at all. It's just we're not discussing it right after your comments, so just bear with us.
All right. Thank you, Michelle. Next up is Robert Gully.
Good evening. I'm Robert Gully. I felt at first that I didn't have a vested interest in the main concern tonight, but I'm a retired respiratory therapist with Samaritan Health Services. When I came in, Dyla Johnson says, "Why are you here?" I said, "For community health in general." And I had a lot of specific things that I wanted to address, but that falls very little and light to these concerns. I'm concerned about physical and mental health, and spiritual health, too. And my main concern tonight is stress. Stress is the harbor of all our problems. And I discovered long ago, working with the patients, that it was generally founded in finances, health, and relationships. And I've heard tonight the reports of a good, loving, caring landlord that had to give the reins over to a corporate lord. And it really changes the whole picture. So for you and me, I would invite everyone here, as a respiratory therapist, to just take a deep breath. Let it out. Let your shoulders drop and be well.
Amen.
Thank you so much. So we're going to be moving on to presentations. The Lebanon Downtown Association will be giving their 2023 annual report. Please come forward.
I just wanted to say that the last time I was in this chair, I promised you that I would come back and we would be in compliance. So I followed up on my promise.
Hi, I'm Shelley Jacla, and I'm the new president of the Downtown Association. And we have been working since June to get into compliance with all of the different facets of... To make the LDA, and we have accomplished that. So it's been... It's been a relief. But we are now... I gave everyone the presentation so we didn't have to read it piece by piece. So I guess it's just kind of highlighting the different things. And we are now back to our 501(c)(3) standard. And we are in compliance with the Oregon Main Street. We... I just filled out the last quarterly for this year already, so we're good to go on that.
Yeah, we're up with the IRS. We have the Department of Justice we're up with. It's been a busy six months budget-wise. We completed the budget, which we turned into the city as well. But it's been a busy six months, and we have been diligently working behind the scene to make this happen. So it's because of the Board of Directors that we have been just putting our heads together to make this happen. So I really give kudos to Shelley, number one, for leading us, but to the entire board that has put forth the effort to make LDA what it is right now.
And Dyla, she did... We have our mission statement. We have our vision. I don't think that we need to read that out loud. The next slide is, we have a new board that is engaged. Two of the other board members are back here with us, and they've worked along the way for us to accomplish everything that we have. We have, again, filed all of our necessary papers. We have developed a strategic plan to go for next year and the following year to accomplish some of the things that some of the... We did a survey even before the survey that just went out with the Oregon Main Street. But the number-one problems that the people that work downtown, their biggest obstacle, which is parking. And I got your email, and we actually are kind of trying to figure out what to do and how to move forward with that. Which will be brought to the attention is not closing down the public parking that we do have downtown. There's two parking lots, and when one of them gets closed, it is very difficult for the businesses to have customers. We also sent out an email or a message to remind the merchants to not park on the street. Don't take up the parking that is there because the customers don't come when there's no parking. So the strategic plan goes through that and different things that we can to make downtown thrive.
One of the other things that we did, which was last week, was we asked the Oregon Main Street to do a self-audit on our... On Lebanon Downtown Association. So they came last...
Tuesday.
Tuesday. And spent all day here, met with some of you folks I know as well, which, again, reiterated that we are doing positive things in our community. We are doing things right. We are being held to a standard. We are... The money that we utilize for LDA is being handled correctly. It is money that we are bestowed to make sure that it is being handled correctly. So, again, I think that we are above board. And in the past, I know those were some concerns. But I think with LDA and with Oregon Main Street and everybody coming together, and they're seeing that we are in a positive role model at this point, and we're doing what we need to do. And it's been many, many years since that has happened. So, again, the Board of Directors has made it happen. But we also made it happen because we have a great downtown business community, so.
Do. And our core values... Again, I don't think we need to read those. They did. The promotion and marketing of the downtown. We have updated our webpage, and it's actually pretty good. So if you guys haven't checked it out, you might want to. All the information's on there, everything that we're doing, our review, our strategic plan. We started a newsletter in September, and it's been going out every month, and we email it to all the downtown businesses. We actually do a paper copy, hand-deliver, talk to the businesses as we drop them off, and put it on social media, Facebook, for everyone to read. And it's gotten some really good responses. And at the beginning, you know, for our calendar of events, we weren't getting a lot. And now people are just like, "Oh, get this in there. Get that in there." So that's good that they actually want it to be in there, and I think that it's a useful tool. We had to make a new Facebook page, so we're almost to 1,000 followers. That's exciting, and our website is getting more and more views all the time. One of the things we've also done on the Facebook page is we do a Spotlight Business of the Week every week. And we've had up to like 8,500 views on Facebook for that spotlight, you know, for the spotlight businesses. So that's good, and people are reading it. And then we've talked to the businesses after it's been posted the following week. And did you see jumps in your sales? Did you see that it was useful? And did you see jumps in your sales? Did you see that it was useful? And every one of them have said that it, that they were busier that week. So that's been good. One of the features that we do in our newsletter is the Taste of Downtown, and we highlight different restaurants in the downtown.
A lot of restaurants downtown.
Yeah, a lot of good restaurants in downtown. So that was something that's been fun to do. We were part of the Downtown Historic Walk. And so we worked with the Build Lebanon Trails and the Lebanon Museum Foundation. And we had about 85 people come to the... It was a little bit less than last year, but it was raining this year. And 85 people came out, walked through the rain, and listened to the spiel. And then we had a couple different restaurants that made donuts and cookies in 1847, and did hot chocolate and coffee for the people. And so it was, it was a really nice event that happened. And it was just good to get to work with people and, you know, build the relationships with the different organizations here. Downtown First Fridays. When we started the Downtown First Fridays, I think I had maybe 13 businesses that participated. And we've had up to 35 participate now in our First Fridays consistently between the 27 to 35 the last four months. And, I mean, they're not as great when it's cold and it's raining and people don't want to walk around, but they're still showing up. And, you know, if you have 50 people come and walk in the rain, it was 50 people that wouldn't have came if we didn't have the First Friday. So they're...
And we're consistent. Where before, First Fridays would be called off like the night before that they were to happen. And so now they're consistent.
Since April, we've had them every single month. Next one, there we go. The Concerts in the Park. We moved the Concerts in the Park up to Academy Square. And we added, we got a stage out there, we had a beer garden out there, we had seven different concerts. And it, and we had, because it's not in the heart of the downtown, we offered it to the people of the, had downtown businesses. So Duffy is the, you know, came out and did the Beer Garden and the Taco Tuesday. We had the Mercantile out there, we had Sugar Vibes out there. And we asked more, but then again, it's also Tuesday night, so some of them couldn't come out and do that. But we do offer it to the downtown businesses first, and then if they can't, then we'll, you know, ask other vendors to come. But we, the biggest concert we had was over 300 people that came. And that was, that was nice. So it, last year, I think, it maybe topped about 50 over in Ralston. So it's, and they kept getting busier. Then we had 100 and some degrees, and people didn't come, and then it rained. And so, you know, the weather does play a factor of people are coming out to it. We started Movies in the Park this year, and that was probably my favorite. When I, like that picture, I just love it. It just, it just takes me back to like when I was a kid going to the drive-in. So I think that's why I loved it so much. But, yeah, we had about 200 people come at the top movie, and a lot of fun. So that one was nice. The Downtown Trick or Treat.
We actually started this with a 5K walk and run. We didn't have a lot of participation, but we also didn't get it going. It was a little bit late, so we're going to prepare a little bit ahead of time, and we're going to change the route this, this next year. But, so, so even having that to start the morning with was a lot of fun because then it just kind of rolled into, we went downtown and started with, with the trick-or-treating and, you know, working with some of the kiddos there, and the police department came, and it was just an absolute blast.
We had, outside businesses came, Breezy Concrete, they played music. And we had a bunch of different ones set up, nice displays, and handed out candy. The fire department, the police department, KRKT came out and played music as well. So it was about 1,500 people, we figured, came to that. It was a busy day. It was very fun.
Oh, wrong one, wrong way.
This was, kind of goes over the newsletter. We started a newsletter in September, and it's, it's growing. So that, we don't really need to talk about that again. We had nine new businesses come into the downtown. Two of them were not listed in here because they just opened in December, and I finished this, and so I'll add them. But we had two just in December that opened. And I don't think we really, well, we had maybe two businesses close. So they were, they were taking up space that was, you know, that was available, so it was empty buildings.
I've heard about it, too, is coming to the merchant meetings every month because these merchants are coming. I mean, we're getting a great interest in...
We've had up to 27.
People coming to the merchant meetings, and everybody's just talking. It's so great to see the faces and let them talk about what, what the needs are. And to me, to see the support of the merchants for LDA is absolutely awesome. It really warms my heart, so.
We had our Community Cleanup Day. Had a good turnout for that. And that was in May. And then we had the mural project that started. We have two that are completed. One is well on the way, but we can't do it right now because of the weather, of course. And then we have one more coming as soon as the weather allows. And then we'll, we'll do some fun promotion when they're all done and, you know, get pictures and put it out there. The art boards, we have one that is completed, one should be finished next week. And then we have one that's about halfway done that will go into the Strawberry Plaza. I'll let you talk about the budget.
Oh, boy. My favorite. So as you can see, we, going back through 2022, 2023, it was a nightmare, I'm not going to lie about it. It was a nightmare going back through somebody else's when you don't have receding systems and that type of stuff. So it was, it was a long, long process. But we did come up with the payroll that they paid in 2022 was $21,818, as you can see there, the bank fees. We just kind of wanted to give you an idea of this is what was paid out that we could come up with for 2022, 2023. They had $82 in bank fees, you know, their donation fees were really down. They spent a lot in marketing the events. Rent is $650, insurance, licensing fees, and then office space. So, you know...
That was office supplies.
Office supplies, okay.
That was the printer.
So what we're doing is we are starting actually with $7,000. Is that correct? Is that what you got on the bottom for the revenue?
Or what the year started with, I think.
Okay, so it was $7,000. You guys gave $30,000 prior to, and that's kind of how the money was spent. So we have put a budget, which we did send to Ron. I don't know if it was put in the packets for our 2023, 2024 budget. So we have done that. We would be more than happy to give that to you. And we are very money-oriented and conscious as to where every penny will be spent and where it has been spent since we started in July 1st of 2023. So I think financially that we're, we're making it. But I think with the new leadership and with Shelley in charge and making sure that we have all of our committees going, that we can make this a year that like no other. So I feel really confident with the, with the financial piece of it. And I can say that I wasn't so sure about it when I started it.
And then we had 27 different sponsors, donors in 2023. And most of them, well, I think all of those were for either the Movies in the Park or the Concerts in the Park. Have any questions?
You should, you should talk to Linco about sponsoring.
Okay. We're actually...
We're not right on Main Street, but I know some people there.
Several larger ones that have never been approached, and those, those approaches will be made now, so.
Our outreach committee just put together the sponsorship packet. So I think that it's going to be finalized this month, and then we'll get it out to people.
I just want to say, I didn't realize the can of worms I was opening during a budget session when I started questioning stuff from the last leadership. I'm very glad I did. And working in the nonprofit arena, as I do, the hill you had to climb was pretty daunting. And after meetings in my front room and at Applegate Landing, I cannot tell you how pleased I am and proud I am that you were able to get back. Because if you remember correctly, one of our scenarios was close it and reopen.
Yeah, that was.
But you chose not to, which I understand why you're kept in line now, by the way. I'm just very proud. You guys really pulled hard on this, and you came out the other end, and I could not be prouder. You did a great job.
We had a lot...
Just don't come into my front room again, Deyla, and start yelling at me.
We had a lot of decisions. We had a lot of decisions. We had to weigh a lot of things. We...
There were hard choices you made.
And we became really good friends. We spent a lot of time together on the phone, Zoom. But, but again, it was, it was a lot of getting together and figuring out, what do we want to do? What's the best for Lebanon? And I've been with the Downtown Association previously, and we knew we could do it, and so we did.
And you did a good job.
Thank you.
Looks great down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also want to echo some of those compliments, especially when it comes to the financial breakdown that was in the packet. It's really well done. I appreciated, like, every dollar was accounted for. So as you guys know, I'm more of the words person, right? I'm more of the writer than the numbers person. So just big kudos to being able to unpack those and getting a real solid, again, account of everything that's there, so. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments from council? I would just like to say from a personal standpoint that I'm glad this is over. That it was, that that whole board, the new board, worked extremely hard on correcting things. I'll just say that, to get back in compliance. It was a lot of work on all their parts and, you know, should be proud of yourselves.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
There's no other questions or comments. Thank you for the presentation and your time.
You're welcome.
So we'll go into regular session here. Lebanon Downtown Association Funding Request, and I'll hand that off to our city manager, Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. What I have before you here tonight is basically a motion from you to approve the payments to the Lebanon Downtown Association. In the 24 budget this year, this fiscal year, there's $30,000. As part of the agreement that the city has with the Downtown Association, there was a few things that were changed in said agreement. They've met all those requirements, as you've heard tonight. So my recommendation would be that we issue the first two quarters of payments, and we'll pay out the other quarters as the other quarters come up.
Paying quarterly.
Yes, sir. We would pay the first two quarters now, and then the, I believe the...
Third one should be...
Third one would be coming up.
April.
And, the dates are in here, yeah.
Beginning of April.
But we'd do it according to the agreement. Any questions with that?
So if there's no other questions, there are motion.
I would move to approve the dispersal of the funds previously identified for the Lebanon Downtown Association.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made to release the funds that were previously identified for the Downtown Association. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to Seventh Street Bid Award. Ron.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. You all should have received the replacement memo for the packet, which we opened bids for the Seventh Street Reconstruction Project. That's a reconstruction of Seventh Street between Oak and F Streets. All new utilities, curb, gutter, sidewalk, roadway. We had 10 bids yesterday, which was pretty good. You can see from our engineer's estimate, these, the numbers in the engineer's estimate that we used were from the Westside Interceptor and our Cheetah Lake Utilities Project. So we were thinking things were going to be high. I think we caught a really good bidding climate right now. First of the year, everybody wanted the job. So the lowest responsive bid was Willamette Valley Excavating at $3,059,000. We are intending to award to them, or would recommend that we award to them, on the 16th of January. You ask why the 16th? Because we've got a three-day, basically protest period. I don't foresee any protests. And we should be able to award then, but just in case there is some unforeseen protest, we've got that time in there like that. With that, I can answer any questions.
Nothing here.
Thank you. If there's no questions, there are motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next on the agenda, Resolution Number 2024-01, Resolution to Acquisition of Real Property by Condemnation by the City of Lebanon. Again, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to have to break this up and not do so many agenda items, I guess. So what we have before you here tonight is a recommendation to proceed with condemnation. This is for a traffic signal, property for a traffic signal, and a third turn lane. And I'll kind of get into some of the details on that. We're in the process of designing the traffic signal at Second, or Airport and Stoltz Hill. This came about by the Applegate Development. It was conditioned as part of their development to participate in that based on a traffic impact analysis, which they have participated in financially, and we are moving forward with that. That was back in 2021. Fast forward to where we are now, we actually have a proposal, approved proposal, and getting ready to start for a gas station and convenience store on the northwest corner of Stoltz Hill and Airport Road. That development went through the planning commission, city council. We had them do a traffic impact analysis on that one as well to determine if there was a need for a third lane, i.e. a center turn lane off of Stoltz Hill heading southbound. That came back as not warranted. It wouldn't need one. We've looked at it as staff and believe that the intersection would function better, smoother, if that was in there to where we had two protected left turns. We are recommending that we, you can see from the description in the map that we have, what that property looks like, that we're proposing to go through this process. You ask why we're maybe in this process to do condemnation as opposed to just negotiating with the property owner? You can see in my memo, we've contacted him multiple times, have not come to any kind of an agreement. And Trey, do you want to weigh in on anything else?
Sure. One of the things that might help the council, that kind of helped me, kind of the background of this, is what, what does the study, the traffic study, what are they looking for? I mean, what would they require to come back and say, "Yes, you need the turning lane," as opposed to looking at it as, is this turning lane better for the city and for the traffic flow?
Yeah, that's a good question. So they'd look at it in terms of turn movement. How many left turn movements do we think that we're going to have there? You can do a signal, take Second and Airport, or Second and Oak Street, for instance. It doesn't have... There. The northbound leg of Stoltz Hill will have a protected left turn, but it would just flow a lot smoother if both sides had that, that same thing. We couldn't condition that as part of the grocery store and gas station because the TIA did not warrant that out. So that's why we're, we're looking at it as a build-out scenario. They looked at it as kind of a 20-year scenario on, on whether that turn lane would be needed.
Is it safe to say that that turn lane will make it easier to develop out farther at some point, traffic flow might say?
Yeah, potentially. I mean, what it does is it allows for, in my opinion, a safer left turn. So you're not conflicting with through traffic on your northbound leg, and you get a, you get a... So you're not conflicting with through traffic on your northbound leg and you get a protected left turn.
And at certain times of the day, that is a moving parking lot trying to get through there.
That's right.
So.
I live half a block from there.
And another point I was going to make is it kind of goes back to the no good deed goes unpunished, right?
Correct.
You know, we knew that they were going to have to have this traffic signal, but obviously we wanted, the developer wanted to get going and what could have happened is we could have just stalled the project until we had the design and all this kind of stuff and and had it actually, you know, this known at that point that we're going to need, you know, this much property and all this. Instead, we, I mean, this is why it's, you know, we, people like working with Lebanon because we don't usually fall into this position. But this one kind of bit us a little bit because now we have to go back and say, well, now we got to put this in and we need this property and we can't negotiate a fair price for this property, which really has no value. It's not developable. It's just a chip being thrown in in a poker game, as far as I'm concerned. So we see real, no, nothing else to do but initiate the condemnation proceedings, which no government wants to do. I don't know that this, I don't think we've done one since I've been here in the City of Lebanon.
I can remember one, but it was a long time ago.
There's no doubt that we bend over backwards to try to avoid this type of a situation, but we're kind of in between a rock and a hard place at this point.
Just because I declared, did the property owner just not respond or did they say no?
No, they have. They've responded with what we would not consider to be a fair response, a fair price. And I think there's, there's some hard feelings on some different things with other developments and different things that have played into it too, where this guy's just not very happy. But.
Well, Ron.
It affects the price.
Ron, can you explain to council how big a piece of property this is? Because it's not a very big.
I was looking.
It's a sliver of property.
I was looking at the blue.
Just so, just so everybody knows, the public knows.
Overall, right now that we're looking for is about 1,100 square feet if we put the third lane in there. That's 1,100 square feet. The overall tax lot itself is only 3,000 square feet. It's non-buildable. It's not even a, you couldn't, you couldn't put a garden shed on it. So, I mean, it's not. And also, I guess it should be noted, this is the developer that owns this piece that developed Applegate Landing. So this, this is, that's another piece of this puzzle. And like Trey alluded to, we signed off on the plat because we didn't want to hold up his development. So as we're going through the design of the the signal, and of course, we have information upfront that we know that there's other potential developments that are going to happen, but we can't publicly say that yet because they haven't committed to it or filed an application. We kind of held off on some of the design so that we'd get it all in one shot rather than moving signal poles three or four different times because of different developments that were going to happen. So we did not require the right of way at that point. He was conditioned to pay into it with the signal. And then we just figured that it'd be a simple process to go through, especially on an undeveloped piece of property, to get the needed right of way to put the signal in that was conditioned for his development in the first place. So that's where we're at. We've tried negotiations, phone calls, emails, and we're basically at the point where we need to move forward with the signal. Because the grocery store and the gas station cannot open, as part of their conditioning, that the signal has to be operational before they're allowed to open on that other side.
Just so council knows, what you're doing now is just authorizing us to start the proceedings. There's a lot of things we have to do before we would even be able to file an actual case for condemnation. There's Oregon statutes basically have a step-by-step guide to what you have to do, especially in something like this where the fair market value of it is less than 20,000. It simplifies it quite a bit. We don't have to have an appraiser. It's not going to be as expensive. But there are steps that we have to go through. And at any point during that step, those steps, the system is set up to try to get a resolution, right? There's all these different steps that part of the reason for those steps is to try to bring the parties together to not have this go to court. And to be able to, you know, sign, sign some kind of an agreement that, you know, we're going to get the property and you get this much money. So that's, that's always the goal. It's not hidden. But we need to move this along. So if it continues to not be able to reach a resolution after all of these steps, we need to pursue it.
Approximately how much time?
For which part of it? The whole?
For all the steps.
If it went all the way through a trial with trial schedules, well, it wouldn't go to a, I think this would be mandatory arbitration, probably less than a year.
We need that signal now.
Yes, and we're hoping for that. And if you remember right, Lynn County had to go through the condemnation process on the southeast corner of that intersection as well. And that took them some time and I'm not sure why it took them so much time, so.
We will continue to be reasonable and offer what we believe to be more than fair compensation.
There's been no counter offer, is that correct? Like.
No, we've offered those things and the counter offers that we've received back were not real offers. I mean, in my opinion.
But there was an offer.
Yeah, it was to waive.
Oh, yeah.
60,000.
Yeah, they wanted to waive SDCs going forward or something.
And that's not.
I was just trying to weigh it against that year. I mean, if.
And we will, we're more than willing to negotiate with them, but, you know, it's got to be, it's got to be fair.
Sure.
Okay.
Any other questions?
One more. Will we have updates on this moving forward throughout the process? Can we?
Absolutely not. I am not going to share anything with this.
I would like all the updates on this.
Any litigation?
Just come in one day and it'll be done.
Like how I automatically said thank you. Thank you.
Some of it may be subject to attorney-client privilege, executive session, which means you get it, but they may not know you got it.
Understand, understood. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, will the city attorney read the title of the resolution?
Resolution 2024-1, a resolution for the acquisition of real property by condemnation by the City of Lebanon.
Is there a motion?
I shall move.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve the resolution. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Last thing on the agenda, city manager's report. Again, Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't go through this item by item. If you have questions on any part of it, let me know. I've got a few things that didn't make it on there. One, you see on the back, the very back page, we have budget calendar that Brandon's put together. We are hot and heavy on budget right now. In fact, we're doing fairly well on having all of our year-end projections in the sheets. Should be noted that as a director team, we're going to be meeting in February to start tackling a little bit more of our structural deficit in the general fund. Brainstorming ideas and coming up with that and all in an effort to hopefully get to this body in March and to discuss where we're at with that structural deficit, ways to fix it moving forward. And just a combination of things that we can do as a city to move that forward and get out from underneath that. So that's well on its way. On top of that, we will be creating the budget for this year. So that's progressing along. The billboard, I finally got some information on the billboard out there on Highway 20 that had come up. Give you a little bit, the lease on the billboard is up in June of this year for the billboard. It's about 800. I can't even read my own writing. 800 every four weeks, just to lease it. So that's what that would cost. I did talk to the folks that managed the lease. Every time we wanted to change the content of the billboard, you're looking at about $250 just for the change. And then on top of that, you need a graphic designer to design what you want. I think one of the things that I didn't really think about when talking to the graphic designer was how many words do you think you can get on a billboard and be effective?
That people can actually read as they drive by.
So because people have two seconds. One of the other things that was brought up was what's your message going to be? How many people are going to be involved in your messaging? And that all attributes to your cost. Because if they're constantly reworking something, then you're dealing with a graphic designer. So that's about what I know so far. We could do a six to 12-month lease, but I think I would want some clarity from the city council on, before we pursue this, is who is going to be, because you don't want me out there messaging for that. I mean, I'm not that.
You're not the marketing department?
No, I'm not the marketing guy. It'd be, yeah, or you definitely don't want Jason Williams doing it. So we probably wouldn't like the message, but. So we would, we would want to know how that's going to be put together. I'd hate to jump into a lease on this and not be ready to strike on it if we don't really have a plan to move it forward. So looking for a little feedback on that.
That feels a hard ROI to measure to me. The bang for the buck's hard to figure on that.
Yeah, and that's where I go, right? It sounds good at the 30,000-foot view, but when we start getting down into the details, what's our message going to be? What's it going to be geared towards? Who's going to do it? What's the graphic design look like? Again, if you have me as an engineer do it, it's going to be really straight lined and that's about all you're going to get.
Be a graph.
It might be, it might be a pie chart or a graph. Yeah, exactly.
Seems like something the Lebanon Downtown Association might be interested in, I guess, or the chamber.
Or the chamber.
One of those taking the lead on this and maybe bringing something to us.
I think we need to discuss like what the ultimate goal of it is. Is it tourism? Is it, you know, highlighting particular businesses? Is it soliciting for employment, like we're hiring police officers? I mean, what's the actual purpose of us purchasing space on a billboard? My professional career, we've done billboards in Albany and those were for, you know, hiring staff. I mean, that's not really a position we're in, to not for a billboard extent at least. So if it's something we need to do, I think we need to narrow the focus before we kick it to somebody else, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, and I just need to know before we pursue a lease on it. I mean, what I don't want to do is pursue a lease on it and have it sit there and we just pay on a lease that we don't use.
Have other cities in Lynn County used a billboard?
I, you know what, I don't know if they, I mean, I think what the school district did, you were saying.
The school district did in Albany, but again, that was for hiring, like bus drivers and classified employees. I.
Were they able to capture the data and see how effective it was?
With my professional hat on, it was a challenge to do that. It was, you know, you're trying to measure by how many applications in that case that we had and that was a struggle. So. Yeah, I don't know how we would for tourism, you know. Anyway.
I agree with Jeremy on, it might be something that the chamber and the LDA and other organizations come together and it might be something they take the lead on.
Before I spend $10,000 plus a year.
Well, yeah, just a basic lease, it's what.
800 a month.
Yeah, so it'd be 96, right? For 12?
I thought it was 850.
It also seems pretty high to me.
They say, I think, I can't read my writing.
They said 800 every four weeks, so that kind of splits it into.
So you double that for the amount of changes because you'd want to change it at least once a quarter. So that's close to, you know, 17,000. So then you have the graphic designer, you might be in 20, $22,000 for a billboard. So.
If this was an electronic billboard, I'd say probably.
Well, that's been brought up by some people in the community reader board.
Yeah.
So. But.
If it was electronic, it'd be a lot more than 400.
I think, how much do we?
If we owned it, it wouldn't be.
I can't remember off the top of my head, but we have the tourism dollars and they obviously, bulk of them go over to the chamber for tourism. I mean, this is something they could take up if they so decided that funding is within their, you know.
Because I agree with you, it needs to be focused.
Yeah.
And we need, we need somebody to grab it and focus it for us. I mean, we're all going to have different opinions. I don't know how we, I don't, I mean, I work with a marketing company, but I can't picture what's best for the city. I wouldn't know what it was.
Yeah, you would definitely have to have some ideas on that, you know, what that looks like and it really wasn't.
Or how to decide if it made anything.
Yeah, what message you're trying to send.
When you talk to the person from the billboard company, I guess, did they, did they have other interest or were we the only ones reaching out?
They hadn't indicated whether they'd had other interest. I think mostly because it doesn't, doesn't come up for lease until June of this year.
Oh, June of this year. Oh, okay. So we have a little bit of time to.
There's a window there.
Okay, okay.
But I just wanted to be thinking about it because if we do, we probably want to step on it and go that route. But again, I want to make sure that before we spend, you know, $8,000, $9,000, that there's a message that we're going to put out there that.
Lebanon's cool.
Yeah, sure.
It's Lamar that owns it, if I remember. Yes. So Lamar, having worked with a similar corporation, what you do is you call and you say, I want a billboard in this area, and they just tell you what's available. And then you can pick and choose your locations and they bundle things. And so it's very possible that that will eventually happen with that billboard if we do not, you know, take it up on it. So.
Okay.
Has the county ever been approached? Have we had any conversation with GoL Rebecca and see if she's interested?
No, I'd definitely do that. Definitely see if the chamber's willing to pick that up and do something tourism-wise.
Where's this located?
Right by the old Far West Seed. It used to be Far West Seed.
Inside the city or outside?
Just outside. You know where the storage unit's at by McDaniel's property?
Okay.
Right there.
I just, my thought was, you know, we kind of own a lot of right of way. Can we put up our own billboard?
Yeah, and I think, and I'll throw the mayor under the bus a little bit. He's got a pretty good idea of a billboard there at Academy Square that I think would probably be good. Sorry.
Well, not a, not a, not a big billboard. It'd be a reader board.
A reader board.
Yeah.
Which I think, I think then you can message all the time, right? And you can use that as, you know, you use your tourism dollars on that and get probably a lot more bang for your buck, maybe? I mean, and then we've got it. We can, you know, you can advertise Strawberry Festival Weekend, whatever you want to advertise.
Yeah.
You can check results on that kind of stuff. The chamber uses the reader board all the time. See what kind of response they get. The Legion does the same thing with their big reader board.
Yeah.
We could combine it with, you know, a project where we get people that wear those sandwich boards.
I'm looking for part-time work.
Let me, let me talk with Rebecca and see what she thinks of this and then I'll kind of circle back with you next month and we'll see.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Great.
Only other thing I've got is potential for, I remember Albany and Eastern Railroad was here in December. Talked about this building in particular. I had a meeting with them about the lease of this building. I think they'd really like to lease this building with that and they want us to be gone from this building.
I was wondering how long that was going to take.
So, so, yeah. One of the ideas, one of the options would be to use the library community room as a council chambers. So I'm kind of getting a temperature on that from this body to see what the, I see somebody.
It's for the record.
The cost of moving, the cameras and the sound.
So if we are interested in that, and that's one of the things that I made clear, is that we can't incur cost when we do this because there is a lot of equipment in here. You've got to build a dais, some of those things. So we would want to pencil out those costs and see what they look like. If that's something you want to pursue, or we will start looking at the costs and see where that road takes us.
Yeah, I'm interested.
I am. I think so.
I think it's time. We're all, we're so tapped in here for space when even tonight and certainly remember the homeless one we had, that was, that was too much. We could use more space.
Okay, we will start looking into that and report back to you and let you know what we come up with. I think that's it unless you've got any questions about anything else on here.
All righty, thank you, Ron. We're going to items from council. I know that there's a couple of counselors that have some information they want to put out. So I will just ask Wayne if he wants to put his out first and then we'll go over to Dave, so.
Well, all the speakers that we had tonight talking about this high rent, I've been doing a lot of research on it and Judy shared an article to me that I think explains the whole thing. And the title is "Trapped: How Federally Backed Financing Is Making Mobile Homes Less Affordable." And it, it goes through everything that they talked about tonight. These sudden and drastic rent increases are putting Ohio seniors geared toward this legacy group, many of whom live on fixed incomes. It is impossible situation. They can't afford the rent increases and they aren't able to sell their homes because few potential buyers can afford legacy communities new. few potential buyers can afford legacy communities new lent, rent. I contacted Jamie Kate, our representative, and this is what she said. It's unbelievable. I'm going to start with a little back history, which will hopefully put this in better context. The legislature, this is the Oregon Legislature led by Speaker Kotek, passed rent control, promising it would make housing affordable. It set a fixed max income each year based on COLA and all of a sudden, exactly what Republicans and landlords warned would happen, rents started being raised to the, to the max every year. Landlords, property managers worry about what happens next and want to be ahead of it, not behind it, and gets stuck with way below market rate rents they can't increase. And really, it's no approach, no approach like you get told by the state how much to raise rent by every year. It's quite ridiculous. But then to make matters worse, when this rent control, which I forget the fancy adjustments, excuse me, the fancy feel-good name for it, is obviously making matters worse and we are looking at some insane COLA adjustments. Well, we need to fix it. So rent increases were capped, Senate Bill 611, to never exceed 10%. It could be less than 10% if COLA is low, but that is unlikely for the foreseeable future. This means rents can be raised, whatever the max gets set at, in this case, the full 10% every 12 months. And conceivably, most landlords will keep doing that because it's now a rat race of trying to keep up with the rising market costs. I feel for these people. And the problem is, I don't see what we can do as a city. There, I don't think there's a way that we could even pass an ordinance that said you can't do that. I don't, I don't think that's legal. But doggone it, they need help and I'm not sure how we can do that.
Absolutely agree.
Is it, is it legal, Trey, for a city to have a, in Oregon, to, city to have its own rent control on top of the state's rent control?
No, in fact, there's a statute that specifically says that no county or municipality can set rent control.
But we can collectively as a body put our support behind this and each of us and, make sure y'all reach out to your state and national representatives and we should, I feel we should do that for them on their behalf as a group. And if people aren't comfortable with that, that's great, but I will.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it too. I just, is Rep. Kate taking this up in the next session? Do we know?
She's pursuing that idea, but I'm not sure she's going to do what she's going to do.
I mean, the problem, the, I mean, and just so that people that stuck around, if the statute is ORS 91.225 and it's entitled local rent control prohibited, and there's specific section number two that says, you know, a city or county shall not enact any ordinance or resolution which controls the rent that may be charged for the rental of any dwelling unit.
It's a state statute?
Yes. And, and the underlying issue here is that these mobile home parks have become such a good investment. That's, and, and, you know, millionaire billionaire investors and private equity groups are buying these up because they are a good investment for exactly the reasons that these people are here tonight talking about. Because they're in a, they're stuck between a rock and a hard place. So if, in, in most situations, it, it goes back to not being free market in that, okay, well, if we keep raising the rents, then they can just move out, but then they're stuck with a situation where they can't get their equity out and they can't move out.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's really, isn't really free market or isn't it in that sense?
I've got a very good.
They see all this money and that's, and then they see the rent regulations going in on, on apartments and everything else that actually does seem to help the renters, but decreases the owner's profit. And so the money's flowing out of those and into these mobile home parks.
Yeah. I've got a very good friend that lives in, in the park there and her, her name was mentioned earlier. Her husband passed away several months ago and they put that on the market because he wasn't feeling well. They put, place on, on the market to sell. When he passed, she said, we've got to do this. But every one of the potential buyers that comes in are confronted with this increased rent and they look at the dollars and cents and they said, this is not feasible. We can't do that. Therefore, she can't even sell it for a dollar.
Right, and then, and that's the problem is, is that, I mean, before these laws were enacted, the, these places could have raised the rent anytime they wanted, right? There was no limitation. But because it's working in these other areas, it's driving, you know, and these investors want profits, right? They want, they want money, they want profits. And so all that money now is flowing to conglomerates that are buying up all these mobile home parks and with the only thought being, let's make as much money as we can for our investors.
So I, I'm in favor of putting support behind, behind something that we can send to the state. I just don't know what that looks like.
Yeah, I was going to say, say, what would be the appropriateness of us as a body producing a letter that, that would go to our state officials? Because this could be fixed, I presume, with a tweak to 611, if they have the will to do it.
Yeah, they don't have to treat, you know, I think it would apply to both mobile home parks and floating home parks.
Exactly.
Which are tax, which are different beings, right? They're different, they're.
Things to consider, it is the short session, this next session, so it's only six weeks, eight weeks, I can't remember. It's short.
Yeah.
Representatives and senators can only run two bills per session when it's a short session, if I'm, if I remember correctly. So what we can do though is pen that letter and at least, you know, echo and relay a lot of what we heard from our constituents tonight so the legislature understands the issue at hand.
And ask for action.
And ask for action. I just don't know what the action necessarily is.
It's not nothing.
Yeah.
What's the, what is the action we're asking for?
That's my question.
I mean, so you, we, yes, mobile home parks need to be separated from the rest of the rent control, but are we asking for more rent control in mobile home parks or what? Like what are we, what are we asking for that will make this better?
That's where it gets sticky. What, what do we ask for? Because basically we're asking for rent control.
Correct.
From the state since we can't do it.
Let me, let me say something. Just wait and you'll have a chance. It might, it might be a little bit, but when it comes back to public and press comments, you'll be able to address the body. So, okay, go ahead.
So, no, that was, that's my question. I, I don't know what the answer is. I'm not a state legislator, so I'd have to go back and look at 611 and read it. I haven't since it passed.
Well, we have a lawyer. Can't our counsel?
I can read it.
But didn't you say something about separating out? Would it be possible to separate out?
Yeah, and I mean, I, I'm assuming that this, we're not the only community in, in Oregon that's facing this and trying to think that.
They have four other ones, this company does.
Well, and they're not even the biggest company.
They're not the only company that's probably.
Well, yeah, they're not even the biggest company that's buying these up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what the answer would be short term. My guess is there's people that have been working on this or have this on their radar more than the attorney who spent the last, you know, hour and a half since it got brought up by the folks here tonight. But I'm happy to, to look into it a little bit more and bring back, you know, maybe something that the council could do to at least, you know, do what they can do, which obviously is not rent control. We can't do that. But certainly we can, you know, sign on board if there's, if there's a legislator out there that's taking this on as a pet, you know, a project to try to incentivize or give, lend our support. But my guess is that there are either people that are trying to tweak this bill already or tried to tweak it during the last session and those didn't make it.
Homeless.
I, you know, so my guess is that we're not the, we're not, we're not reinventing the wheel here even on what we may or may not be able to do, but I don't know what the answer is at this point.
Yeah, I don't think we're, we're reinventing the wheel either. I think we just need to get squeakier.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, this is, this is just the result of, you know, you help, you know, you help some and then, you know, they're, they're going to find ways to make their money.
Right, love and unintended consequences. Money's like water and it always finds a way to go through.
Let me read another paragraph from Jamie Kate's letter. She says, now that brings us to today. I completely sympathize with the residents who are looking at being priced out of their housing, but this is exactly what we warned would happen. The people hit hardest would be our elderly, low income, and yet Democrat leadership is still praising it as a victory and historic move on Oregon's part. This is their baby and it won't be undone until the public makes enough of a pressure cooker situation for them to backtrack it. And even then, you could remove the policies, but the damage has been done.
Reading between the lines, what that means is that rent control isn't going away. You know, so it's not worth us debating rent control.
The key word there is control. What, what are they doing?
Oh, yeah.
And this particular way it's being done is not control as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
We made a pledge of allegiance to the flag today. The last two words, liberty and justice, are not happening with this group of people.
Unintended consequences.
Yeah. I don't think we can have any delusion that us as this little group sitting right here is going to change all this. But if enough people don't try to send some kind of a message about this, it won't. And if we can, like I said, if we can be one pebble in this thing, I think we should do what we can. And the, what's in the letter to me, you know, I don't, I just want to throw my support behind it. I think we do. I want to personally, I think we should.
You don't fight the fights you can win, you fight the fights that are worth fighting.
Exactly.
This one is worth fighting.
Yep.
Absolutely is.
So.
I've been told no enough times.
So the city attorney will look into, we, well, this will come back up in conversations. I'm, I'm supportive of, of pinning, like Michelle said, a, a letter to our representatives, both state and federal. That's, that's our job is the, to be the voice of our constituents, so.
I would encourage everyone that was here tonight to write a letter to Jamie Kate. Do it.
And the governor.
And the governor. So we'll, we'll move on to Dave. You had some stuff you wanted to put out tonight.
I do and I can't, I want to make the statement, I was going to make the statement before I knew any of you folks were here. It's somewhat relevant if you stay with it, but we've all been approached, people have come up here and talked to us, we've all been approached on the street about our feeling about houselessness, homelessness, unhoused. And there's some of them that at least have approached me who have come up and said, well, you don't respond, so you don't have an opinion or you don't care. You're not listening or you don't care. I want to make it very clear that I care about every citizen of Lebanon equally. Their circumstances affect me. I wouldn't be up here spending this time if I didn't think that way. My personal belief is that the housing first approach to solving that issue is widely ineffective and inefficient. We've spent billions and billions of dollars on giving somebody a shack or a tent or a tube or a shelter to live in and it's, it hasn't worked. These folks don't want a shelter, they want to be able to afford their house. The real issues that have caused that are, to me, three things. There's addiction, there's mental health issues, and there's the fact that, perfect example, our government and our economy has priced the elderly and the underfunded out of being able to be in a house. That's a tragedy to me. It's an absolute tragedy. The reality though is, is me as a Lebanon counselor, I understand that we have a $2 million budget deficit coming up if I include opening the jail, which is a priority to me personally. There's no money for us to build a shelter and I personally don't, if we did have the money to build a shelter, we don't have the local social system in place that can help those people. We'd be warehousing people and I think warehousing people with problems is inhumane. I don't think it's the way to solve it. I don't think it's fair to those people and I don't think it's fair to the rest of the city to, to bear that burden. This is my personal belief. My personal belief is the federal and state government, and this is a great example of it, needs to refocus their funding and their resources to help people who you can really help, like these folks, instead of wasting our resources and programs on things that have proven to be hugely and widely ineffective. Just my opinion and I have to put it out there.
I agree.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dave.
With that being said, I have a few things for tonight. I know the budget process is, is right around the corner, or actually we're starting it basically right now. The, I feel, and I'm getting a, I want to get a sense of what the council feels. I feel that additional work sessions every month until the budget process is concluded is warranted. I think we have a lot on our agendas constantly and these meetings, you know, if you need to zoom in, I know people have other commitments, zoom in, we can do that. But I think it's, it'd be beneficial for us to have some work sessions, first one being goal setting so that staff can direct their budgetary process so they know what they're trying to accomplish here. So the, we had talked about goal setting last year. Me being new in this job and trying to compete with, with everything that's coming at us every single meeting, this being a short meeting actually, has, has prevented me from moving on this, but I, I think it's, it's imperative that we do that this month, have a work session. What's the council think of, of that? Any?
I think that for me personally, scheduling wise, there's, if there's some flexibility when they can sometimes be middle of day and study in the evening, it's beneficial to me. I know it's not to everybody. I think it might be to Carl to, in some point, but the, I understand that we do the best we can here. We do a great job, I think, but we're all living personal lives that need to be attended to. And if there can be some flexibility other than just coming out and saying, hey, it's going to be this Wednesday at 5:00, be there or you've not fulfilled your obligation.
I, I agree. Any other comments?
I prefer evenings. I had to get it out there.
And Sundays.
Yeah, I definitely don't want Sundays.
And we can put out many different options and we can see, we tried to do it before, but this time, we, the last time we had some work conflicts and, you know, but last time I also thought it was imperative, what we were talking about, that everybody be present, like actually here. These can be zoomed, okay? I know that would help alleviate some of those, some of those work conflicts and, and whatnot. So, but I think it's very important that we have one in the next couple of weeks and, and start working on goal setting. For that, you would, you would visit what, what your constituents from your wards are asking you about. That would help you determine your goals. Also the 2040 vision of the city, which needs to be revisited and needs to be adjusted and, and caught up to nowadays standards, but that's a whole different beast we, we can talk about later. But based off those and the, the issues confronting the city, we heard one tonight, the jail, reopening the jail, that kind of stuff, start jotting all those down so when we have the meeting, we can actually talk about it and we can refine it and be able to give a product to, to staff and the city manager so they can get into their budget process and actually have some guidance. So, Ron, did you have some?
So there's a couple of ways you can do this. Goal setting in and of itself, it can be a challenge, right? When you do it, especially when you look at where we are financially and what we're, what, that, that, that's probably going to be a big goal, I would think, to solve that problem. A lot of cities use what I would call maybe a moderator to come in and do that.
Yes, please. That's what I was going to try and say.
What happens is you keep everything on task, right? And so you're really, you're really grinding into what are the priorities of the council, council being the community, right? You represent the community. So what, what are those priorities? Rather than say myself coming up here trying to moderate it for you or, or somebody on staff, because staff's going to throw you some goals, you know, that, that we think are worthy too and that hopefully they all align. So that, that's probably the easiest way to do it. So that's probably the easiest way to do it. Moderator's going to cost you, I don't know, I think we looked at one, $7,000 to $8,000 for a session. That doesn't mean that in January, we can't get together and go, "Okay, so how do we want to do this?" You know, and move that forward. It also doesn't mean that we won't, we can't sit down and tackle the goals ourselves. But I've seen it done both ways, so kind of need to...
We just need to hire you out to another city to be a moderator and just exchange.
I've gone through several goal-setting, and I've never paid that much for a moderator. That sounds insane.
And that's just one that we looked at.
Okay.
Okay.
I feel like we could find someone in the community that could help us through this process. I mean, I've, I know, for example, he's probably listening, and he's going to be upset that I'm going to throw his name out there, but Tom Oliver, I know, has done this for us with the Lebanon Schools Foundation before. He's been a moderator for a goal-setting session. That's just off the top of my head that I could think of, but there's other people in the community that could probably just play referee for us.
Would you like me to reach out to a couple of people? Would you like to do it internally? Big question is whether we can get somebody here on, within the two weeks, right? If we do it that way?
Maybe, maybe the first session, we just play it by ear, and then by the second session, we have someone lined up. The first one, we see how it goes.
Yeah, I mean, we can do that.
I think the first session, we could be establishing what our, you know, the macro goals are, and that doesn't take necessarily as much moderation as when you start fine-tuning it to, "Well, this is what's important for this person, and this is what's important for that person."
So, so why don't we do this? If this is acceptable, why don't we have the second meeting of the month, basically make it a work session? We can get an easel with some white paper, and I can't spell, but I can write, and you just have to guess what I said.
Just put it in graph form.
Yeah, well, I can graph it.
She's the word-perfect thing. If there's a red squiggle, you got to change it.
Yeah, exactly. If that's in, and then, I would recommend a moderator. I think you're going to get a better product at the end of the day, but we can start it out, for sure. I think it'd be tough to get a moderator unless it was somebody from the community within two weeks. But this would give us an idea of how we want to tackle that.
So are we looking at the January 24 noon? Is that, because that's typically our second?
Yes.
Okay.
That is typically our second. That's the way the municipal code is written, second meeting is on the, at noon. That does not mean that you can't change that.
I'm just going with the municipal code here, Michelle.
You, it can be changed. This body has the authority to change it, turns out.
The 24th is the, is the meeting time on that.
So let's, Ron and I will talk some more on this, and we'll put out an email, more guidance. But right now, from this point until you get that email, brainstorm, start thinking about those things, try to refine them as much as possible, and we'll just, when we meet at the next meeting, whatever, whatever the course of action we have, you know, a moderator or not, we'll start working on this issue. Fair enough?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. I don't have anything else. Does any other council?
Just want to let everybody know that with the Arctic blast coming down this weekend, we are opening the Warming Center for the Unhoused.
Is it wrong to say it that way?
Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, because we're supposed to be getting down into the teens down here. So if anybody wants to volunteer, come on down.
Okay. Now, public, any additional public comments, please come forward. And please keep them short.
Yes, sir. McRae. I just wanted to say...
Please, please sit down so we can hear you.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to say, I think you, Councilman Savage, actually quoted a piece out of SB 611 that said that this is rent control for dwellings. Again, I didn't just propose that we have a problem, I proposed a solution to the problem, at least a piece of it. Separate manufactured homes and those folks that are floating in the same sort of scenario, they are not renting us our home. I'm a homeowner. I pay you guys a lot of taxes to be a homeowner. Less than two years ago, my house could have sold at $90,000. Wow, who would have thunk, right? Now, I'm gonna, I'm scared to even imagine what that's going to be, but it's up to us. The one little thing we can do is get ourselves away from the other renters. We don't belong there. The other thing is, and I have to ask, because I'm not sure how this pans out, but Portland did it. Portland separated themselves. They have independent rent control. I mean...
The Housing Commission?
I don't, I'm not sure how it all flew, but I can tell you that my legal aid attorney, whom I consulted to put forward the lawsuit that was mentioned by other, one of my other colleagues here, wherein I prevailed against Legacy, she suggested, "Do what Portland did. Find out how they did it. Get out from under this." That was unfortunately a few months ago, and I really wish it would have happened. I had no idea this was a national pandemic of predatory investors. Thank you, folks.
I do have a question for you while you're here.
Yes, sir.
So I understand the separating trailer parks from other types of rentals?
Sorry, sir, I live in a manufactured home.
Manufactured home park?
Thank you.
I understand the separating that. I'm trying to get, once it's separated, then what conditions are we placing on that? What's your proposal?
I'm suggesting that what we're doing is, we are now being realistic, that they're renting glorified camp sites. And nobody can move any of this here, you guys. Those things have been there since 1975. You pick that up, and it falls to dust. I call it my wobbly box. I mean, I used to have a beautiful home in San Francisco. Things change. I migrated up here intentionally. So the idea would be to have a, not fair housing, but let's talk about fair space? What if you had, what if you had, for example, a plot of land, and I wanted to bring my horses out there and corral them, do what you got to do, Nance, but pay me X, Y, Z because it is three acres, and I want to make some money off of it? Can I tell you how much three acres are worth renting? I can't. I mean, I am not prepared to at this point in time. If you want to know that, I will prepare. I will research it. I will find out. But as somebody that has been, I, I mean, I studied law for 35 years as an investigator and a paralegal. Let's use the word of the rule of law, and that, that you spoke, Councilman, that little excerpt you pulled out that said that we were renting dwellings is exactly what I'm talking about.
I have to give credit to the city attorney for that. I didn't actually say that.
Oh, did I get the wrong guy? Sorry.
No, I'm still with you. I'm just...
How do we assess the value of it?
No, are you proposing additional rent control on parcels of land? I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get down to the actual proposal. Like, how do we, or how does the state make it better in manufactured homes?
Yes.
Right on. So I don't want this to turn into another big debate, so I'm going to give you two minutes.
One, two minutes. What I would recommend is that the current owners of the homes be offered the ability to invest in the equity of the space rent, so that they ultimately own the space to buy it.
There's a thought.
That's...
I think that's going to be stopped by that person who developed that, and is making so much dough off of it.
What I'm afraid of, if we get, not we, if cities and governments are too aggressive on how you manage manufactured, manufactured home parks, the people who own the land are going to subdivide it and turn it into a, they're going to turn it into a normal subdivision, and everyone who's in there now won't be able to...
There's certainly that possibility, and it always was possible that they do this. However, you considered that it's about 10 grand to move one of those manufactured homes out of there, and that's not even talking about having to take the asbestos abatement issues, et cetera, et cetera. These guys, Twin Cedars is worth, in reality, maybe three to five mil. They paid more than $12 million so that they could shake that tree and be sure to get the fruit. And they did. Frankly, I wouldn't have said no, but I, but the whole action that they're taking here is so predatory, they know that what they have developed is stuck.
Yep. No, I understand, I totally understand all that, and I'm with you guys, I want to support you guys. I'm just trying to figure out what we, what you are asking for, like, what, this is a numbers thing, right?
It is. You're right.
Numbers thing, so what are, what are you asking the city or the state to change in the numbers? Once they separate out manufactured home parks from apartments and single-family dwellings?
Yes, sir.
They have to change something to make it now affordable. Are you putting a 5% cap, 3% cap? Are we, is, are those the type of numbers we're talking about?
This all sounds way, way more viable. The, for example, the assessor's off, are we done with that?
Finish your thought.
The assessor's office, I wonder what rates that they have increased my tax base, based on their assessment of my improvements of my property. They don't improve this property, so they've, I mean, they pay, they're, they get paid every month, what did we figure, 17, $170,000 a month? So, I mean, that's a heck of a great pay, from our community alone.
She had 170,000?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I appreciate it. Thank, I think you answered my question.
And I'm going to actually figure that one out. I got to figure that out, because I gave you a solution, but I didn't finish that solution.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, you guys, very much.
Thank you all for coming. We appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Please come forward.
I, I understand that probably this topic is not going to be taken up with the legislature this year, is what I'm hearing, that it probably is going to be put off till 2025. So there is a Representative Pam Marsh, and she's from Jackson County, who is, has been spearheading and gotten involved in this. So that is one of our people that we can contact and see what kind of support we can Having rent control, I think, I think you're saying that your hands are probably tied. We can look into that. But there are a couple of things that maybe the city can help with. I don't know if you can put restrictions on manufactured home park eviction limits, so that we're getting a, even if we were evicted, and we've been threatened from some, several different angles, probably we'll get some harassment because we were here today. So maybe we can put extended eviction notices, so people have time to look at other options. We're hoping this doesn't happen to us. A letter to Legacy. Some cities and city councils have sent letters to Legacy. They pretty much are getting back the same answer across the country. And then if there is a committee that we can put together, that we, that includes the city, that helps us with the plan, with you involved. Those are some of my suggestions.
Okay, thank you so much.
And who, and who I know at this point is involved in this issue from a legislative standpoint.
I wrote her name down. Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
We sure feel for you.
I, we really appreciate your time. Actually, we've gotten a better response than we were expecting, so thank you.
And I guess I do want to respond, it's one of those areas where if the state has basically completely involved themselves in regulating an industry, they don't leave much room for the local, the cities or the counties. So I, I certainly can't tell you for sure that we couldn't do anything on the notices and the evictions. I don't think we can. I think this is a regulate, a state-regulated industry that we're not going to have a whole lot of success in changing or doing anything about that, other than, you know, potential contacts. One of the things that, again, I was just doing some research, is, is there have been some states that have passed legislation that require, and this is after, probably after the fact and doesn't help you, but have made it easier for the owners of the parks to purchase them themselves, as opposed to selling them to some of these mega, mega owners. Again, that probably doesn't help you right now, but it creates a financing mechanism that allows the people to then own the land and their, and their mobile parks. Certainly, I hope that's something that the state is looking at as well, but again, I know that doesn't help you at this point.
Will we have an opportunity to work with the city again on this, or comments back?
Mm-hmm.
You can always come to Dr. O.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Mr. Merrick, can you remind me which ward this is in?
It's Ward 1.
It's Ward 1.
Okay, thank you.
The whole park is.
Just checking.
You know, not a one of us, and you're an attorney, aren't you?
Me?
Yeah.
It depends. Are you going to yell at me?
He sure is.
I'd be the attorney.
Not a one of us in the park have got a contract since, from Legacy. I've lived there 35 years.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was wondering about that. Did you, did you sign new leases when they took over?
No, I signed one from Works when they owned it, and then from Dirksen's, before Jerry died, when they owned it, and then his daughter-in-law took it over. And now, all I can do is go back through the ones I've got. So what can we do about that? I mean, I'm not crazy about signing a contract. No one is. But I'm sure that we should have one.
There's different possibilities. Some of the, sometimes these leases are freely assignable, meaning they could sell it and assign the leases to the new owners without getting a new lease. I don't know that that's in the contract. It might be.
Yeah.
I don't think that anytime an apartment, apartment building sells, that they have to go out, the new owners have to go out and get a new lease with every tenant.
Nope.
So, I understand.
We first came in, like I say...
Might be good practice, but I don't think they have to.
I know when we first came in 35 years ago, they wanted us to sign this, you know, and we did. And then I lost my husband, and then when Legacy came in, all we've got now is a manager that we really can't say anything to. If we call the main office, which a couple of them have, and talk to agents of Legacy, then they turn around and call our manager, and he comes down and says, "What's going on? What's wrong?", you know? Well, Jewy, want to talk about, buddy? You know? So it kind of puts us between a rock and a hard place. And like they were saying, we've got farmers' wives in there. This isn't California or Florida where they've got the rich retirees and stuff. This is Lebanon, Oregon. And so we've got little gals in there that are farmers' wives, never worked out a day in their life, just raised the kids and worked on the farm. They're getting maybe $1,400 a month, and they keep taking this up. And you're going to have a bunch of us homeless on the street here within six years. I'll never see it. But, you know, a lot of us don't have kids that want to take us in, or a place to go. So, I mean, it's got me in tears. I just, I worry about everybody. I'm sorry, I took a time.
No, we appreciate, we appreciate...
But I do appreciate you listening to me.
We appreciate all the comments, because this is actually the first time I've heard of this, and it pits it on our radar now, and we can work, we need to educate ourselves on the legal aspects of it, and then, and figure out what the...
Beautiful homes.
Yeah. Figure out the courses of action that are available for, for everybody, so...
Right, right.
So I, I thank you.
Any help you folks can give us is really going to be appreciated.
Oh, Mia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any other public comments?
Beg your pardon?
Oh, they treat me like a cripple because I'm so old, really.
Oh, shut up.
Good evening, everyone.
Gamil, do you need two minutes, or are you going to be fast?
Two minutes, two minutes. To answer any of your questions, my subject seems so trivial compared to this predatory issue. The billboard, the whole idea is 100% tourism. The Tourism Committee is 100% behind it, you'll, you know, the conversation you'll have with, with Rebecca and the rest of the team. The issue is figuring out how to pay for it. I mean, we have funds to pay for it. We'd like some assistance in paying for that, but in doing that, to protect ourselves as a city, you know, if the city participates in paying for it directly, I would assume that, my suggestion is that there's another committee put together to, to design what's going on the board, what's happening in that quarter of the year, and maybe that design could come for approval, depending on if the city participates in direct payment and assisting with this. So it's, it's definitely a chamber, tourism, and maybe an additional committee that would be focused on just what kind of tourism activities and events to go on that board.
Excuse me, can we keep it down back there? We still have a meeting going on.
So that was the entire idea, purely tourism-related, helping us keep our businesses open, asking folks that are driving by to, you know, it's an action statement, stop and shop, stop and eat, stop and, and visit something that's happening that quarter, whether it be our restaurant or, or an event. So it's all about, for me, it's all about that, and that, I think that will help the And that, I think that will help the businesses see where we're putting some of our funds in helping them stay open and, and be profitable. So the, the space is up in June. However, what had happened was, he was willing, he wanted to get, get rid of it in July, excuse me, in January, but realized he was set till June. But he was told that if somebody else, if he could find someone else to take over, they would just transfer it. So it's available between now and, and June, but we'd have to let them know that we're willing. And the Tourism Committee, the existing Tourism Committee is 100% behind it. And we, we, we have funds for it. And we would love to, to work with the city to help pay for it.
Okay, we'll talk more about this.
All right, look forward to it.
Hey, thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for all your hard work and time. Thank you.
Any other public comments or press comments? Come up, sir.
How you doing? All right. Two years ago, I dealt with this with Santa Avenue. They evicted me from my apartment because they want to raise my rent double. They couldn't do it. So what they did was Oregon passed no cause eviction. And they evicted me. I lived on the street for 30 days with my family. We found this place. The rent was kind of high, 900. But, you know, we're stuck in between a rock and a hard place. So we bought the house. My mortgage is about 800, which is fine.